To the dot, so I will call our public hearing to order. If everybody would stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the sovereign republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. We have a pretty busy agenda, so we'll go ahead and get started. We are going to conduct a double-barrel public hearing. Tonight, we will talk about our 2021 to 2041 update of our comprehensive plan. We will then discuss our 2021 budget, and then we will open up the floor for public comments. And then, following those, we will close our public hearing. Because we have several guests here tonight, we're going to go ahead and go to the comprehensive plan update. The comprehensive plan process is facilitated by the Department of Community Affairs and the Three Rivers Regional Commission. Scheduling conflicts have prevented Kim Dutton, who is the planner for Three Rivers, from coming tonight, so I will be driving the presentation. So if you guys will just pay attention over here to the TV. And Council, can y'all see? Can y'all see good enough on the, um, see good enough on the TV? Okay. So this meeting is the kickoff of public hearing to talk about the comp plan process and how to do it, and why do we need comprehensive plan? Well, first off, because this is state law. The other reason that we want to do it is because it allows us to assess the existing conditions of the town and then our future needs. And because this is a public process, and we're going to look for input from so many different stakeholders and other groups and citizens inside the community, we want to establish a community-based, long-term vision for the community's future. And this makes sure that as we're building our budget, we know what some of our overarching priorities are. It also gives Council some policy guidance for future actions that are based on a shared vision. Because we've got the community involved, and because the community is giving a direction and vision and goals for the Council, and it's implemented into a planning document, Council can use that policy to justify future expenditures, for example, for infrastructure, for park space, for other needs within this town. It also allows us to formalize a plan and leverage that any public and private investments, for example, if we want to go after any grants, it benefits us to say, in the community-based, community-driven vision, in the comprehensive plan, to justify any costs or expenses that are expenditures that we want to make. It also gives us our qualified local government status. This is one of the things that the town has to do to remain qualified, to be a qualified government. And, of course, it also allows us to remain eligible for grants and other funding programs. A number of programs federally and at the state level are tied to your local qualified government status. So the planned framework, if you look at the sample comp plan that you have at your table, you will see that the comp plan is broken into several sections. We've got the vision statement of the town, our goals and policies, our community priorities. One thing that is new this year, or in this version of the plan, is the broadband capabilities, or the broadband work that, um, to provide up-to-date technology and needs for the, uh, for broadband, basically. It also includes our character areas and land use, so we take a look at our residential properties, any multifamily that we've got, commercial areas, any recreational areas, and how do we plan to use the land of the different areas, and what steps do we need to take to improve them? That's one of the things that I would like to see a big difference in with the comprehensive plan, is not just what do we want a certain character area to look like, what do we want downtown to look like, what do we want our commercial district to look like? We want to have steps in those to get it to that, to that point, because a plan that's just a wish list or a checklist doesn't really make it much of a plan, it's just something that you wish that you had. But if we have actual planning steps for each of those character areas, that will help us reach that goal. So the planning horizon for the comprehensive plan is the, uh, is a 20-year timeframe. We're going from 2021 to 2040, and we do it in five-year increments, and we call those the work program, the community work program. In the back of the comprehensive plan, you'll see a list of tasks, and a good example of it, we have a sample of it up there on the, on the table, a work for Council. One of the things, and the last, uh, the last time we had a comprehensive plan was expanding the library holdings to maintain the adopted level of service. And as everybody's aware, in October of 2019, we reopened the library. So we put the newspaper article from the Times Herald that shows when we reopened the library, it shows pictures of the services that the library offers, and this is a good way for the town to point and say, hey, we had this goal to expand our library holdings. Well, guess what? We accomplished it through the community work program. And this allows the town to celebrate the success, the successes that we have had. And there are, and I'm proud to say, there's a number of items on the community work program that we have either started, completed, or are in progress on. So it, and the reason that we do this is so that the comp plan is not a static document, it's something that's always living and growing, and we're always trying to get things accomplished within it. And part of the reason that we have the five-year cycle is because, think of how much things have changed in the last five years. We didn't want 10 or 15 years of the 20-year planning horizon to get past us, well, we have regular five-year updates. So the comprehensive plan team, there are quite a few of us that are going to be working on it. We're going to have town staff, we've got our consultant team from Three Rivers, we have the steering committee, which tonight I have two-thirds of it, well, actually, more than that, we have, uh, two-thirds of our citizens on the, on the steering committee here, as well as mayor and the town staff that will be involved. We have the public that is going to be invited to participate and provide feedback, our elected officials, the city staff. So we're basically just going to be rotating information and things back and forth and around, and really getting a good broad base for the planning. We are going to ask and encourage the public to participate, and they can do that in several ways. They can start, start of the, um, part of the steering committee. Mr. and Mrs. Edge, who I'll introduce here in a little bit, answered the call that we put out for citizen participation. Of course, we want to have elected officials. We want to try to identify economic development representatives, and then other community appointees. So as we're having our steering committee meetings, we will have representatives probably from Public Safety, from the county, from Public Works, to come in and say, hey, this is how we can be a part of, or how we can assist in your planning and in your programming. We will offer open house and community visioning events, which is where people can show up. You see, there's going to be a combination of in-person and virtual, or a survey or something, but we will put out and say, hey, give us some of the vision that you see for the community. How do we get there? What, what do we need to add? What do we need to incorporate? And then, that also helps make sure that we have the community's vision for the future, because, you know, we're doing this in five-year increments, and so we have to ask, where are we five, 10, 15 years from now? And then, as a steering committee, we will draft a plan for review that will be open for public, um, comment, and then also comment by town staff. Our schedule is going to be, um, our schedule is going to be, is going to be fairly reasonable. You can see that we have steering committee meetings, we have five of those, and then we have, um, public hearings, and then reviews of the plans. So we're, we will probably move once a month for probably the next five or six months, maybe two hours in a session, just to identify the things that we want to change or improve on within the comprehensive plan. And then, of course, with the goal being that the town adopts the comprehensive plan by October of 2021. And then, here is a contact information for our planner with Three Rivers, Kim Dutton. She has been to a couple of our events over the year, the last couple of years with the town, so she will be a familiar face. But the way that the steering committee is going to be set up is we will have, we're going to go ahead and hopefully identify meeting dates and times, and then call those work sessions, so that we can have a more than one council member at the sessions, at the, at the steering committee sessions, if they are able to come. Open record laws prevent us from congregating in more than a quorum, which is three of us, but if we call it a work session and advertise it, which, you know, is what we're going to do, because it's something we want to invite the public to, we can have a mayor and two or three council members. As it is, it can just be a mayor and, no more than the mayor and two council members in attendance anywhere because of the sunshine laws. So we will have all those as, as work sessions, so that myself and then however many council members attend can and want to. But then, we have the public members of the steering committee. Joe Bridges, who is the point of contact for the Bridges family, will represent them on the steering committee. He wasn't able to be here for scheduling conflict, but he is on the committee. Tony Brown, who is a local business owner, is also going to be on the committee. He has the refinishing business that is up by William Circle in 54. And then, we have Beverly Thomas, who is the branch manager at Bank OZK, right here in Sharpsburg. And then, we have Alessandra and Alex Edge from Wellsburg Station, and we would like to thank you guys for coming as well and being a part of it. So after the, all that great information, does anybody have any questions about the comp plan? Okay. Brad, is there anything else that we need to, um, talk about or cover with the comprehensive plan?
Other than if there's any comments from the, since it is a public hearing, are any comments, any of the people here?
Public, do I have any comments or questions about the comp plan, or anything that you hope to accomplish with it?
You've got to say so.
We just moved here in 2019, February, we've been here about two years almost, and we're just, you know, you see all the growth in Future City, I own a business in Brooks, and my family just moved to Brooks within like the last five years, Sonoy. And so we just wanted to get involved, because we live right through the woods there, and we just wanted to get involved with sort of the direction of where things are going and be.
Yeah, thank you.
That's what we did.
What, what's your business? What do you do?
Uh, it's a, it was a, the car wash next to Huckabees, we actually turned it into like a car sales lot, and, uh...
Oh, okay.
Didn't you have a car dent placed or something?
Yeah, it would be double as that as well, but, so I do dent repair.
Okay.
For a living, I actually travel the country and do health insurance repair, uh, right now, but, uh, trying to get more invested locally, so that I'm not traveling all year all the time. So, yes, it doubles as that, and then we also sell used cars, basically.
Awesome.
Yeah, it's just something we've done, and we've got that going about the last year since we bought that property.
Okay.
But, you know, we're just kind of along for the ride, we just want to be involved, you know, and be a part of the growth, really.
Just to prove that it's a small world, no matter where you go, Rick, uh, Rick Corbin, his dad Chick owned the BP up here, uh, at the corner of William Circle and 54, and any time I would go through Huckabees or Brooks, I'd swing in there when I was traveling, and I'd speak and talk to Rick, and...
Yeah.
And Chick owned his dad for, I don't know, five or six years even, until he, until he passed, you know?
Yeah.
So, but he, uh, he, Chick gave me one of my first jobs cooking biscuits in the gas station. Yep, and I kept the job until I overslept one morning, and he called him. He said, I did the best I could, but what, talk about this?
I'd probably hire you back.
Oh, no. But, uh, yeah, it's a, it's certainly a small world, so...
Yeah, he's been really easy to work with.
Isn't he?
I think he appreciates it, somebody that's doing something with the property next door, so...
Yep. Good. Ms. Edge, what about you?
Um, I'm definitely interested in community outreach, I would say, and especially in regards to the comprehensive plan. There are section within it that, uh, I'm sorry, I haven't been able to review it recently, but like, is there a section within it that talks about community outreach and...
There's not a dedicated section in there, but each of our activities is going to be probably centered around, if not for the actual activity, just to get input and ideas and thoughts and engagement. So a lot of what we do here in the town is about promotion and outreach, and that's the background that I come from, too. Mr. Flavin over there could probably do, give us some lessons on outreach.
I was about to say, I'd get her name and...
Now, hang on, though, wait a minute.
I did have a question, too, but, yeah, we're, we're doing, in the steering committee, can anybody get publicists coming?
Yes, absolutely, yes, and, and that, I think, is going to be part of our coordinated effort, is to identify groups, the high school, Team Hungary, uh, Sharpsburg Baptist, invite them to come and engage as well. Beverly, do you have any...
Just business development, really, is, you know, being the only small community bank in the area, that was just kind of my, my take and input on it.
Okay. And this is not just for, for the bones of the town, this is how do we attract more businesses? What product do we have to present? What do we have, services do we have to provide to get those, to get additional business? You know, if we're going to develop that section of 54 north of McIntosh, we're going to have to have gas, we're going to have to have utilities, we're going to have to improve the water delivery, in addition to the sewer infrastructure. So there's lots of planning pieces that go into, uh, economic development, comprehensive planning, stuff like that. So thank you all very much for, for your participation. What, while I've got y'all here, what day of the week works best to do? Because what I'd like to do is go ahead and set, well, maybe not tonight, go through the next couple of days, find out what days work best for you guys, and then set one day each month within the community center, or two, to, to hold the meetings. So what days of the week in the evening work best for y'all?
I like Mondays, first of all, I think, you know, beginning of the week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Okay. We'll, um, check our schedule here and then just pick some dates. I will, I will get feedback from a couple of the others and just see where we stand, but, you know, other than council meetings, we don't have a whole, whole lot going on Mondays. Tuesday, depending on our, then our instructor schedule, may work a little bit better, but we'll, we'll figure it out. I just wanted to get, get a couple of days from...
And the only other thing I would suggest, which, you people in doing this, is that this became a requirement for comprehensive planning back in the early 90s, and so, under what was called at the time, House 249. So this is a, and a little bit unusual 20-year cycle since that particular time, but because of all the growth that's taken place in the state of Georgia, DCA has come back, and most of us did this, kind of did an update to it back, I don't know, 10 years ago, I guess, and so it became a movie, 20 years. And so now, DCA has come back, and I guess it was like 2018, when they said, okay, we want everybody to redo their comprehensive plan through the, you know, by the end of 2021 for 2041. And that's just DCA's way of trying to figure out what's going on, because they review all the plans, uh, to figure out what's going on from a development standpoint, so that DCA can provide the services in the areas it can help in for the city. So we're doing this a little sooner than before, because I think a current comprehensive plan really didn't run out until 2026, 2027. So it's, we're doing cycles a little sooner than we were.
Right. And one thing that I didn't think to do is, is I introduced you guys to this, but we haven't introduced ourselves to you, so I'll go ahead and start here, and then we'll go to that end of the table and then come over here. Obviously, I'm blue, I'm the mayor here in town, elected in, um, what was it, 2019? And they got me for four years, so, so far, so good. Julie?
I'm Julie Stroud, I live in Sonoy. I've been employed by the town since last November as the deputy clerk, I work for Tom.
And I'm Deana Ray, um, I'm the town clerk, and I've met Mr. Edge before, and I know , um, Ms. Thomas and Mr. Flavin, but I'm here ready to do this.
And she is our town clerk.
And I'm Brian Seals, I'm the town attorney.
I'm Tom Teagle, I'm the councilman.
I'm Elizabeth Gud, I'm a council member, mayor pro tem.
Stan Barton, council member, in Sharpsburg for 30 years.
Cynthia Puckett Pike, council member.
And, and while we aren't required to have a certain number on, uh, elected officials on the committee, it's an open invitation, you know, they're going to have all the dates, and, and I hope that all of them can attend every meeting, but we'll probably have a rotating, um, seat on the, on the steering committee for council member. And then, of course, I'll be at, I'll be at all of them. All right, so if, if there are no other questions about the comprehensive plan, we'll go ahead and slide into the 2021, 2021 budget. Do we have any other questions before I move into the budget public hearing? All right, wonderful. Deana, do you want to go ahead and take just a second? This is our second reading of the budget and the public hearing, um, to present it to the public, uh, in accord with the state law. So, Deana, I'll let you take over.
Well, tonight, we're just going to review the proposed budget, um, for the public hearing, so we can vote on our first review, um, after the public hearing. So, um, did you guys agree on it? We have increased our total revenues and expenditures by 4.5%. Um, we've moved some money around just due to 5% increase on a lot of different stuff, as far as bills and things like that. But do y'all have any questions?
And I think our priority, typically each year, we go into the budget saying, this is a priority. Year one and year two, it was, it was modernizing and updating a good number of things. We're very happy to report that personnel, technology, uh, even things as routine as furnishings have, have been brought up to, you know, newer, more, more modern standards and levels. So, so that part is, is almost caught up. And for this year, this budget is almost, it's not quite a holding pattern, we definitely want to hold steady, uh, through the, the upcoming year and with 2020 that we just had. But what I would like to do is to start positioning budgets based off of the comp plan that we're going to do, to start funding some of the things that we know are going to come out of this comprehensive plan. One of the things that you're going to see down at the very bottom is a new, um, account code that we've added, and it's an infrastructure slash utility fund. The town, with all the growth around us, we may be positioned to, we, to, to improve our infrastructure and/or improve or expand our utilities. And that is something that I want to go ahead and, and start planning for, start thinking of, and then just getting everything set up for revenue growth and just growth in general. We have kept our millage rate steady for the last six or seven years, we haven't had any movement on it. The natural growth in the tax digest has, has given us the growth that we need. We have been very frugal with our money. Deana, where are we on our, um, operating budget and our general, um, accounts receivable and all that?
Um, as of November the 30th, and I've put a copy by your packages, um, we have received 120% of our, um, 2020 budget, as well as spent out only 79% of our budget, so that's very good.
So that, those numbers tell us a couple of things. Number one is, is we are very conservative in our revenue projections, which leads to, you know, the 20% overage, um, with 25 to 30 days left in the year. Our expenses, we're very frugal, because our expenses don't keep growing. You know, we, we are able to keep those up underneath, and that allows us to put money back into our, our, um, general fund, and basically just saving the cash for things that we know are going to come up. But in, in most cities, as you are, are growing, you are, money's coming in and money's coming out. So, so even though we have been doing good to save money in order to continue to improve and provide services or expand services, now it's time to start taking some of that saved money and putting it to work, because money that's not working for you is money that's just sitting. So we want to kind of take this budget year, keep the foundation in place, but get ready to add the new things that we know that are going to be coming. Do we have any questions on the proposed budget? From public or from council?
How do we get motor vehicle tax?
Um, I'm going to defer that one to Brad, because that law has been changed up a couple of different ways.
Well, we have an ad valorem tax and a TAVT tax. So when you buy a vehicle, the ad valorem tax comes from that, and Brad?
Sort of.
Sort of.
Yep, okay.
Edge, y'all know, what they used to call the birthday tax, when you got your, your tag, you paid your ad valorem tax. Any car on which the TBAT tax was not paid still collects the ad valorem tax. So those are older vehicles. All right, so they went in and created the TBAT where they collect, if you bought a new vehicle, you pay the tax upfront. So when you get your tag bill the next year, it's only got the $20 fee, it doesn't have ad valorem, because they're collecting it upfront. The, the way the distribution formula was set up was just nightmare for everybody, uh, but essentially, if you go buy a new car, and you say your address is Main Street, Sharpsburg, then Sharpsburg is supposed to get its portion of the TBAT tax. That was not necessarily working, because what was going on at the revenue department, as you all know, Sharpsburg is probably the biggest city in the state of Georgia, because everybody from way down there all the way to the Fulton lines may have a Sharpsburg address. All right, so they went back in to change the law. Initially, everybody was getting a few gift, and then everybody was, as it went down, uh, and you had counties and school systems getting a larger share of what the municipalities were getting on the, on the meat car side. So they went back in, did some changes to the law, but of course, it wasn't finished until June, because of the delay in the legislative session. And so as the quarterly starts rolling around, I have not heard, if you guys, something, did you get more money?
No, we're, we, we had to do a, we had to do some research and, and show how much we've received for the last several years, and we definitely took a big hit this year.
Yeah, so, in other words, it, it apparently was not working the way they thought it was going to work, and municipalities were kind of getting shorted on some... and municipalities were kinda getting shorted on some of the money, so. Anyway, but that, that's, well, eventually, the ad valorem tax would go away, as all of the older vehicles, now that may be thirty, forty years from now, but at some point, all of that will go away, and they'll, they'll collect that tax when you buy the vehicle.
So Brad, if somebody in the town of Sharpsburg buys a new car, we get a portion of that sales tax. All right, what about the renewal fee every year, like twenty dollars, we get a portion of that too?
No.
No, it's just one and done.
You're done.
You're done.
You're done on that particular vehicle. Now, they, they did go back, and they, they tried to recollect on used car sales, on the, on the T. And so I'm not sure how that worked out on the used car sale. Um, and, and of course, as you may recall back, I don't know, what was it, twenty years ago? They tried to collect the tax, sales tax, on a person's sale, and as the tags would get changed over, they would start billing the prior owner for a value. So I'm not a hundred percent sure what it's gonna look like, but it.
I just thought it all went to the county, and we got a portion.
No, we, no, actually, we, we, we get a little bit. It ha, it has gone down, we should finally come back and fix it, but hopefully it'll come back up.
I'm just curious, I didn't know about that.
You know, we, we got a big, um, lost, or was it SPOS money, a couple of thousand dollars, where they found an era last month, so maybe in a couple of years, they'll go back in the referendum and find another era, so. Yeah, it would get reimbursed.
It might take that long.
It will.
Yeah, we will take it.
All right, any other questions or comments on the budget?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that on the hundred and twenty percent of the budget received, that forty thousand of the forty-two is a two-line item. So it's, it looks pretty, but it ain't as pretty as it looks. And you got your about seventeen thousand local option sales tax excess, and you've got twenty-three thousand dollars from the grant, which I think is what the federal bailout money.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, that's forty thousand of the forty-two. Just a comment.
Yep.
Can you repeat that, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I didn't do that. The lost?
The local option sales tax, we got sixteen thousand more than we had budgeted. And the grant money, which is the bailout money, is twenty-three thousand. Those two together are forty thousand dollars of the forty-two that we're showing as a balance to receive, which is basically the excess we've collected over the budget.
Well, everything and the negatives are added up to the forty-two, not just two, those two.
I know, but those two I think make up forty of the forty-two.
Right, right, right.
That's all, that's my only point.
But we received, um, we received a scholarship reimbursement for me for going to school, or a class, a cultural class. We received our safety liability grant money in there, and then we have the CARES Act that's also in there. And the L M I G grant.
Okay, um, in addition to our, um, operating budget, we also have our SPOS fund program budget, uh, for the upcoming year. Basically, uh, Deana, I'll let, well, Deana, I'll let you talk about the SPOS.
Um, right, we also have a balance of five thousand, five hundred fifty-seven thousand, I mean, uh, five thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars in our SPOS twenty thirteen account. In our twenty nineteen SPOS, we have a balance of eighty-two thousand, one ninety-one, and we have earned about thirty dollars of interest, so that eighty-two thousand is our balance. The fifty-seven thousand is our projected, um, receivables from county to county, um, for the planned projects for twenty twenty-one. So the total that we'll have, um, will be a hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred seventy dollars.
And so this is another.
I have a question on this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Where can we, where can I see these, uh, SPOS plan projects?
We, uh, it's gonna be the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
And why, and, and these are what we will, because these are the areas that we can spend money on, we can spend SPOS projects on. We need to make sure whatever projects we have in the comp plan, or we run before council, fits into one of these.
Category.
Broad categories. Of course, they're broad. And if we overspend in one category, we have to, Brad, help me here, we have to have, um, uh, allocations before council, before we move the money around. So if we wanted to do a twenty-six thousand dollar utility project, we would have to approve the transfer from roads and streets to utility. Correct, Brad? Okay. And these are the, the three areas that were put to voters when it went to referendum back in seventeen or eighteen? Sixteen, seventeen? Or whenever it went to vote, it was just, whatever.
Nineteen, nineteen, two, two thousand two. Two thousand seven, two thousand four, two thousand seventeen.
Two thousand seventeen, okay, so. All right, well, if there are no other questions on the proposed budget for twenty twenty-one, I will go ahead and call for a close to the public hearing. All right. Stan has, do we motion to exit the public hearing? Okay, all right, well, then we will disposs the public hearing, and then go ahead and call our council meeting to order. Um, Madam Clerk, do we have a form available?
Yes, please do.
All right, thank you very much. And if, first item that we have is to review and approve our meeting minutes of November ninth. If I can have everybody take a look. Thanks, Ms. Beverly. Um, and let me know what you think.
I make a motion, accept as written.
All right, Stan has the first.
Second.
All right, Elizabeth has the second. Has everybody had a chance to read over the minutes? All in favor?
I wasn't present.
Was it present? All right, uh, nearly unanimous, thank you. Uh, next bit of new business is Mr. Jeffrey Flavin with the Sharpsburg Market. Come on down!
I have a short week, and I gotta run, I got a pretty crowd of kids in my house.
Well, you sure you don't wanna stay for a little while? And hang out, it's a lot quieter over here than it is over there.
I have two kids running around. Have you seen that? All right, um, we have had two Sharpsburg markets thus far, and it's been, they're going very well. From logistic point of view, every vendor that we've gone around has loved it, they love the atmosphere. Uh, they're excited about coming back. Uh, we had twenty-six, we had thirty-three last time, we have twenty-five coming in this Friday. We're trying something brand new. We're doing a market at night from five to nine. And we got Santa Claus coming, a real Santa Claus, a real person, he actually has no problem having people sit there, but we will have parents, they're gonna take their own pictures. And we'll have a food truck here, it's a brand new one, it's, they found them out of church, and their name is Mother Cluckers. So I'm just, so I have nothing to do with that. They go to crossroads. But I'm really here to, uh, look ahead next year, because I like to plan ahead. And we will not be meeting in January or February, but we wanna start back up in March. So I'm coming for twenty twenty-one to ask you to consider, again, waiving the fee for a nonprofit organization to rent out the facility, uh, for, for next year. And we have already given the dates to Deana, uh, from March already to December, and they've already been given. And then I also like to put on the table that, uh, to process, to begin to think about putting, uh, our vendors on the street. Uh, if you're looking, your ordinance is, it's, uh, ordinance section forty-four, four, one fifteen, and all the things that states, we will do, um, barricades is the right people. But, uh, again, it's a section forty-four dash one hundred and fifteen, uh, look at that. Um, and we're basically doing ninety percent of everything else already.
Is it the special event ordinance that you're talking about?
It is a special event, yes.
Okay.
Um, and so we're, we're meeting everything, uh, we meet after just about everyone, and then we go, how'd it go, how did it not go? And, uh, we, we, we have immediate feedback, uh, from everybody. And so that's really just what I wanted to present to you, just to say, the vendors are really, really excited about coming back. And we have more vendors next year, we're talking in the forties, possibly fifties, that wanna come back. Some of them remember doing it twenty years ago.
Mm, cool.
And they're going, we wanna be a part of that again.
Yeah.
And they wanna be a part of the beginning, and they're excited. And some of the, uh, town people have been coming in, they're going, they're excited too, so. Now, first of all, say thank you for letting us do it, and, uh, just to say thank you for letting us do it again, uh, as we, as we move forward. Uh, I'd also like to present the idea of, let's piggyback like we did the book club, uh, sales. I thought that went well for y'all, we made more money, we had more foot traffic, and it had more of a camaraderie between the town and this people coming in. So start strategically thinking about what we can all do together. So this is something to think about, so. I don't know what else to say.
So when you're looking towards twenty twenty-one, you're wanting to hold monthly Sharpsburg market, are you gonna, and continue using the parking pavilion, would you also need an inside space for the community center as well?
As of right now, we don't project to use inside. Uh, even though it's rain or shine, which is what it is, uh, we're just gonna take, if it rained, we're gonna give the money back. Most places don't, we're just not about that. I'm, I'm not gonna say no.
Right.
Uh, but we don't project that yet. The only, only thing to possibly use is, for some of the vendors or food truck people might need to warm something up, which, that was offered, but it wasn't used that day.
Okay. Um, have you already identified the dates for twenty-one?
Yeah.
We just emailed to me this morning.
Have you had a chance to see if we have anything scheduled on those dates?
Not yet.
So all of them are clear for now?
Are they all on Saturdays?
Those are all on Saturdays this time.
I haven't double-checked it yet.
Okay, okay. Um, so council, one thing for, we can go ahead and do this a couple of different ways. We can go ahead and, as a group, just go ahead and approve those, how many months out of twelve? Nine months, ten months out of twelve? Just skip the January, February.
March to December.
Okay. Um, so basically, one Saturday a month, you know, we're donating to Team Hungry for them to raise money for their nonprofit mission, and also to hopefully continue to do movies up there. Um, we did some research last year, and we collected about thirty-two hundred dollars over those target dates from, was it nineteen or was it, it wasn't twenty, was it? It was nineteen? Nineteen, okay, so we actually have really pre-COVID numbers. So we will lose a little bit of, of hard currency if we donate these dates to them. However, I think the goodwill and, and civic engagement and foot traffic that we get through here makes up for it. Um, the, the last two markets have gone extremely well. I've heard nothing but positive feedback, and any criticism that there was out there was constructive. Um, it's just something to build on. Now, a, as long as you guys understand that we've got the parking lot coming up that may or may not happen in early twenty-one?
That was one of the things we kinda talked about, do you have a projected time, so we can work on that?
Um, not yet, but, uh, not as of, of, of today, but, um, the engineers will come back in January with a ninety percent design document, uh, cost estimate, and by then, we should have the amount of time it's gonna take. I don't know that we will have it exactly scheduled with the county, but by the time I come back to you guys in January, I anticipate having a conversation with the county to help us with that, which will also help us with the cost estimate. So, long story short, I hope to, by next time we, we meet, to have those dates. And I will try to get them in January and February, but, and there's four Saturdays in a month, so I may miss your Saturday, but just.
Long as we know we have time, we can plan that.
We'll give you, well, you'll know well before March, when it's gonna be.
And then you know where you're, uh, where you're working.
Um, Deana, is there anything else that, um, well, information-wise, we, we should or need to provide? Okay. Uh, Jeff, any other final thoughts or?
Outlets.
Outlets, okay. So I'm, I'm gonna go and buy just a sleeve of GFCIs and just start walking around, like, like I told you the other day. Um, and, and I'm gonna try to do that.
Next year, Thursday, maybe.
I hope I don't kick the can down until Friday, but.
What's that?
GFCIs, we've got a couple of GFCI outlets out there that need to be swapped out. And it's a timid process, it's just a matter of.
In the gazebo, you mean?
Gazebo and.
What do you mean by, uh, vendors on the street?
Blocking off the street.
Uh, basically a street festival.
Like they used to do, I guess?
Like we, like we would do the.
Used to, in the old days, they'd block it off at the beginning and tear it down, the whole town.
Yeah, oh, yeah, right, yeah, we would have, we would have vendors in each of the two big lots up here. The lot just to the west of the fertilizer warehouse, and then they would park, um, where the townhouses are and behind the duplexes on Stoveall. That's really the biggest thing, is, is we'd have to work out parking. If we can do the, if we can figure out parking, we can, we can easily do a, a, a street festival. It probably won't be as big as the old fall festivals, but it's a start. You know, we could just block off main.
We could block out the whole thing, and people can park on the streets, you know, for as many as.
Yeah, yes, they would. So, but that will, that will take planning, and it'll probably be more suited for a springtimey thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you wanna try to look at your March date as a street festival?
I will know more probably first of February.
Okay.
Because vendors are saying they're, you know how they, they lock in for a full year in certain places?
Yep.
And so they're making that decision now, like, some people, we had four people back out because they got to be a part of the Ashley Park Four Day Festival.
Right, yep.
And so, I mean, we understand that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
They're making a living.
Plus it's inside.
Yeah. Yeah, it's gonna be cold.
Yeah.
Right, so, come on out.
Is there any more room for Friday, Friday evening?
It's a possibility, yep.
For Sharpsburg Baptist ladies?
Yeah, Sharpsburg Baptist, uh, ladies, they do a lot of, they make a lot of crafts and quilts and things like that. And I had actually submitted to Lord of the Net, I sent an email about it. And that was two and a half weeks ago, I haven't gotten anything back. So maybe we could get her to, to look into that. But I was basically inquiring as to the cost, which I see the cost is on here.
Yeah.
And, you know, if what they make and sell would be allowed.
Right, I think one of the things that we have tried to do is, and I don't think this is true, we try to limit, we've got two or three already nonprofit there that we've put there, we're trying not to hand out any, but I don't see why not, but I would, I'm only calling over here to list, like, sort of picture what lights look like at night. Um, and did we ever find out if those outlets work? At the time of the polls?
I think it is the, uh, sale, whenever the lights come on, they're supposed to come on. So we're not definitely, I mean, I think we're gonna work on that, to look at the dates, and all of those.
All right, so at this point, um, we've got a good bit of, uh, information from Jeff. Uh, of course, he's always available if we have any other questions. Um, if a member of council would like to, you can make a motion to, um, donate those listed dates to him.
I motion, I'm sorry, I motion to donate the date and waive the fee, yes.
All right, so, so Cynthia has the, um, motion to donate the dates that he's already submitted to De, to Deana, and to waive the fees.
Second.
All right, Elizabeth has the second. Uh, all in favor?
I got one comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
As long as there's no conflict with those dates.
As long as there's no conflict with those dates, I'm good with that.
Okay. All right, all right, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. All right, congratulations. We have a Sharpsford market for twenty twenty-one.
Try to do it for third week, third Saturday, what we were trying to do.
Third Saturday?
If there's a conflict with that day, I guess you just switch it to another day in that month.
Okay, okay. I got thirty kids.
Hey, all right, thank you. Well, hey, let's, we'll touch base tomorrow or Wednesday. I'll be around.
I teach a lot of kids, you know, this call.
Okay, I'll do that. Hey, you may want to check with Dana first. I think she's gonna double check those dates. And while she's doing that, I'll go ahead and move to the next item on our agenda. We need to do the first reading for our twenty twenty-one budget, which is the one that we discussed in our public hearing earlier. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.
This is the first reading. The second reading will occur at the January council meeting. It will adopt the the budget to go into effect for twenty twenty-one. Town charter says we have to do it within thirty days at the end of our fiscal year. Fiscal year ends December thirty-first, so as long as we do it within the month of January, we will be on track. So do we have any other questions about the budget?
Not above good.
That we have presented. Thank you. Yeah, staff does a a great job minding, minding the register for us and really helping us spend our money well.
Do we need to vote on this?
Yes, we will.
I'd like a motion to accept it as written.
All right, so Stan has a motion to accept the first reading of the budget. I'm sorry, Dana?
All the dates that Ethan has given me are open.
Okay, excellent, good.
I have a question before we vote.
Sure.
Are we, this, this doesn't queer whether or not you vote for it. But are we assuming that there will not be another shutdown? And are, and if so, are we assuming the governor's gonna pony up another twenty-three thousand to fill in the hole?
No, I don't think they're gonna do that.
They canceled the last payment on that. The governor decided to reallocate the money.
Oh, how nice of them.
Yeah, to some other people.
Nice.
But but again, we're not, have you all assumed that we're gonna have another shutdown?
Well, we should, we cut the community center rental about five thousand dollars because of that. So.
That's it?
That's it, that's it.
Is there anything else besides that that would, where we could take a hit if they shut the same down?
Community center instructor fees, we're really bad on that right now too. If you can see, they haven't been back. The CPR is the only classes that are being taught to medical personnel to get CPR certified. Other than that, our SLOF and our LFO is still the same.
We could see a little bit of a hit in the lost, the local ops and sales tax. But it would be delayed by three to six months because the money is distributed, is collected and then distributed thirty to sixty days after the recording period.
How about your alcohol taxes?
Those are, no, those, no, because those are permits and fees. It's not so much a per-drink tax, is it?
The alcohol taxes, each alcohol company that sells in Sharpsford has to send us a excise tax. And right now, we've received twelve thousand dollars for alcohol.
So actually, our alcohol may go up. If things shut down and people start drinking some more.
The only reason I bring it up is that we ought to go into this with our eyes open that that revenues two-hundred-and-nineteen could be a lot less. Or could be measurably less. Just less going to, you know, understanding that.
Yeah, and I think the the biggest thing that hit us last year as far as as revenue was the community center losing, what, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-three?
Well, right now, I'm looking at this, it is the community center rental. We budgeted sixteen and we've only received fifty-two, so we're out ten thousand seven hundred dollars.
Well, we can always adjust the budget accordingly. So, I mean, we don't know what the future holds, Tom.
Right.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
So just have to go with what is.
Yep.
All right.
I'll second.
We only did an increase of four-point-five across the board, you know, on some things, which is, which is pretty, pretty low. So we try not to go up, you know, we we try to, you have to, you have to make sure your income accounts are going to match your expense accounts because we know we gotta pay bills, you know?
But yeah, we uh, we 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 thought about that and bounced it back and forth while we were working on these numbers about a potential shutdown. And I I I feel that we're fairly well-prepared for it. I think our experience last year is is gonna help us. And we knew not to put as much emphasis on the community center rentals as we did because we lost ten grand this year.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
I think twenty-nineteen was a a massive year for us when I took over that. And we kind of split our Saturdays and had two rentals instead of one. And we were making some major bucks. I mean, we made probably twenty-four thousand dollars that year.
Yeah.
Have y'all looked at the expenditures and the things you could cut?
Yes, yes.
Y'all know what you're gonna cut.
Yep, yep.
Going into, if we have to have another shutdown.
Yeah, if, you know, if if the revenues go to hell because of, because of the COVID thing, I mean, what are you gonna cut? That's the point. And it's obvious, the transportation, the advertising, travel.
The training, the training and travel, the roadside training. I mean, that's another thing to look at, the lawn care. Somebody bring me a lawn mower and I'll cut hours for five hundred dollars a month. Actually, I'll beat their quote. I'll do it for four fifty. And I'll do their job. You came out here Saturday and blowed the thing off because it looked awful. But anyway, so, but there's a lot of things that we could cut, yes. You know, the things that we can't cut is, you know, our utilities, that's the biggest thing. Other than that.
Okay, my second.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. All right. So next item is going to be the statewide mutual aid and assistance agreement. This is a intergovernmental agreement between GMA, Emergency Management Agency, and the town of Georgia. And this basically says that we will help our neighbors and if we need help, we can ask help of our neighbors. Brad, I would assume that you have done this a time or two, so I will let you take a few minutes if you want to walk through it and and just kind of give us a Brad's notes on what we're, what we're agreeing to here.
Well, I would, you can pull your mask off while you're talking. As to whether or not the town had actually ever signed, you know, mutual aid agreement, say with the sheriff's department or with the city, due to the Peak Street cities, and the answer probably is no. And the reason for that is that the town does not have those public safety or public works departments where you can offer that. So in other words, if a culvert collapsed, you know, across the road in unincorporated area or the town of Turin, and you had a public works, they could call you. You could send your public works folks over there to assist in the, in the pipe replacement. But since the town does not have that, then it can't offer that type of service. Now, Sheriff's Department, of course, responds to anything that's going on. Fire Department responds to anything that's going on here. All right, so those agreements are out there. Now, of course, fortunately, knock on wood, the only time we get to kind of use one of them in the city of Newland was because of the rally that was held there. And and that was kind of an interesting deal because everybody sent people and responded, but nobody sent us a bill. Okay, and it was simply that they looked at it for being a training exercise and that the city would do the same thing for them if if that did. So it's, it's kind of a part.
When was that?
That was two.
Two years ago?
Two years ago.
Were the Antifa was gonna show up?
When the Nazis came.
Thank you. Well, according to them, I'm a Nazi.
All right, when, when, when the Aryan nation, whatever their name was, when they came and had a rally.
Oh, okay.
And we had all the Antifa folks that showed up and all. And we went through a huge deal. We got this lady Mary, I can't think the name right now, from Georgetown Law School that's been doing this. And they did study what went on in Richmond, studied what went on in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, and a couple of others in Seattle. And we put together a plan to separate the folks. And so this plan is being used across the country that we kind of came up with and which we had help from GBI, State Patrol, and all these other organizations to come up with the plan. And we had, it it was, the event went off. There were only about six arrests made. Most of those were for, you know, paramilitary-type activities that were occurring. All of those people ended up not coming. Of course, most of these people weren't from around here.
No, they wasn't.
You know, they were from other states and other places. All right, so that being said, that was kind of the thing that went on. Of course, this could be the same thing with the gas explosion. It could be the same thing, like I said, with, you know, roads flowing out. It could be situations where you had other type of activities, emergency activities that occurred. You pick up the phone, you call, and they come. But what it does do is it provides for you to reimburse those agencies when they're providing the services. All right, so for here, this is a statewide that GMA has put together for counties and towns and municipalities to sign off on a statewide agreement so that you would get GMA people coming in. You would get those resources would be available under the agreement for them to come in and work with your local people, which at this point, you don't have a public works. You don't have a fire and police. So anyway, so the the odds of you obviously going out and assisting Sonoy doesn't exist. If GMA, if you didn't have an agreement and GMA called you up and said, can you send some folks out to do this? So this is, they got together and said, we need to have a statewide plan. So the bottom line is, if you enter into the agreement with it, they will provide you the services if you ever need those services from the state.
We can't do anything for that.
But we don't have to provide.
We don't have those resources. Well, budget would pay. That's, that's the whole, as, was, I know Turin's gotten the same kind of spill. Harrelson, Borland, all of these smaller towns that went out to everybody. And so, but the idea is that if the state sent somebody in to assist with that type of an emergency, all right, then at that particular point in time, and I guess, I'm not sure, let's say that a train car came off the railroad tracks and came plowing all the way up through City Hall. I mean, that that's the kind of thing. Then you could call and get assistance from the state to come in and quickly put that together without having to wait for the railroad to take some kind of action. All right, but the downside is if you do call them, there's a provision in here for you to reimburse them.
For the service.
Uh, for those costs for them to come in. Now, of course, there are two pieces to it. Number one is you don't have to call them. You know, under the agreement, you don't have to call them. You designate someone, in this case, it's probably the mayor, to call for that. So it's not like they're just gonna show up if something goes on. So, you know, if if there's any downside for the town is that, we're talking about budget, is that it could get into a budgeted situation if you were asked to reimburse them for those costs.
But only if we called them to help us with something that was.
It's only if you call them.
What happens if they volunteer? Could they volunteer?
If they don't get a call and they volunteer, then we don't pay.
But I I think what Cynthia's asking is if we called them and they showed up, could they use it as a training exercise and not send us a bill for reimbursement?
Kind of like how limited, yeah.
Yeah.
Because they know it's a small town, we won't have enough budget anyway.
The last conversation I had with Mark Cooper, nobody gets sent a bill. And that's been, I had to, I did a presentation at GMA this past year because we didn't have GMA. But the year before, on everything that went on during that, as of that day, it was, you know, whatever it was, fourteen months later, nobody gets sent a bill, so.
If we don't have to go sooner, maybe then.
I got about, I have one minute.
Are we on the hook?
I'm on the clock, you see.
No.
The thing of it is, odds on, we probably won't ever need it.
Yes, thank you, Jesus.
But I'd like to have it if we did.
I mean, that's, and you can terminate anytime you want to.
What about tornado?
That, yes, this would be a situation.
It would cover tornado if you, if you wanted to call in for assistance from the state.
Is it just the state?
I think it's something we need to look for.
Or a toxic.
Just in case.
Yeah, I see.
Just like insurance.
Yep. It just comes.
Do it like insurance.
We don't have to call them, ain't no big deal. They need them, it's, it's there.
And look, we're already reimbursing folks for helping us out. We pay stuff to the county, not all the time, but they're having a few kind of times when we've done public works and they'll send us a bill and we'll make the payment out of, usually SLOF is where it comes from because it's.
Infrastructure needs.
Infrastructure stuff.
Also too, this morning, when, before I came in, I went down Williams Circle Sunset. I've been doing a lot of work, work on Sunset. But the end of Sunset and fifty-four with the Dollar General is, I fell off into a huge hole.
Well, that's the one I was talking about, yeah.
Yes. By the Dollar General Sunset, not Mac, or not Williams, it's Sunset.
Oh, oh.
Yes.
Well, is that same, that's same, no, that's another one.
Where's one way?
That's another one.
Okay, well, okay. Can you remind me to look at that? I didn't know there was one at Sunset.
Yeah.
Because we just got another bill from them for the rock, I guess, that they were putting in Sunset.
The driveway, cool.
Yeah, who's from the driveway?
Huh?
Who's from the driveway?
I, you know, that's the thing, I don't think there's any downside, you know, but it's just like anything else. You know, you, you call them when you need them.
It's just like insurance, if you don't need it, don't, I mean, don't call it in. Deer get your pictures, they don't call it in.
Do we have to have a second reading on this? We just vote?
No, this is, this is straight up vote.
I'll make a motion, we accept it as it is, and because I said, I think it's better to have it, not need it, and need it, not have it.
Okay.
Well, there's no downside.
Yeah.
I don't see anything wrong with it.
All second.
All right, so Stan has the first, Elizabeth has the second. All in favor?
Yeah.
Unanimous? Thank you. All right, that concludes new business. You guys need to put out.
I'm sorry.
Do they, do, uh, do they need to sign anything?
Um, yes, I do have, if you can wait just one second and and approve the second reading for the caterer's license, I will need everybody's signature on two forms and then you're out of here.
Okay. Caterer's license, second reading, basically let the 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 food truck sell alcohol.
Make a motion.
Okay, Elizabeth has the first. Tom has the second.
Oh, he said, he said.
All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. All right.
Yeah, I apologize for being late and leaving.
No, 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 no. Hey, look, we got it in. I appreciate y'all staying. Thank you for that. Do y'all have anything for polling the council, either of you?
Nope.
I don't.
Oh.
Okay.
Not me.
I think not yet.
Thank y'all so much. I appreciate, appreciate you sticking with us.
Okay, so we're finished with old business. So we have no polling?
Uh, well, those two don't. I'm gonna go down the list in a second. Go down the table. Thank you, Cynthia. Okay, so polling the council. Tom, you have anything?
I've been admonished not to have anything.
I know the feeling. I know the feeling. It ain't easy. It ain't easy being green.
Hey, I have one thing I want to ask about, and it's a yes or no question.
Okay.
Heard anything back in Engineers about the capacity of our sewage system?
No, that should come in the next two, the next week or two. Oh, and Chris has had, I think he has had the baby.
Oh, wow.
They were on baby watch, uh, Thursday when I called to get an update. He said he doesn't, he, 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 he's waiting on a baby. He doesn't have an update, but he will have something both on the septic survey and the back parking lot for January.
Number two.
Yep.
You know, with all this activity that y'all have got coming in here with all these festivals and whatnot, we ought to go ahead and fix that, cause that fence back there, that looks like, looks like hell.
It looks worse now.
It works worse because Saturday when we hit, when we were here decorating, their pine straw fell over it and the rest of it broke down. So, and I sent a picture over to Art of Valley to see what they're going to do because they were just dummying it and to make it stand up, you know?
So do you think, well, I wonder, so I have seen it construction sites where they take these fences and just put them on posts and it's just like a temporary fence. With it falling, we may need to do that. That's, Tom, that's actually a really good point. And I hadn't, I just hadn't thought about it.
It just, it just looks like the devil and I hate for all these wonderful folks to show up for our market and say, huh, that's hack.
Well, if we can get some of that black belt even and put up.
Yeah, okay.
You know, something, something.
Yeah, we're going to need that.
We, we can call and get some quotes from somebody and see what they'll charge us to put up something to block that off.
Okay.
But we can't close it because Art of Valley's been parking back here because they are out of parking space.
Are we charging them for that parking?
No.
Well, well, so we kind of horse traded a little bit with them. Instead of paying them for our overflow parking, we're letting them park in our lot here in the week and getting the overflow parking for free.
Okay, so we're getting the overflow for nothing.
Yes, now we are, yes.
We're not paying them anymore, that's for sure. And we'll look at that. Remember to look at.
That's all I have.
All right, um, clerk's minutes?
All right, um, we do need to reschedule our January the fourth, um, council meeting. We have to amend our 2020 budget and we have to approve our second reading for the 2021 budget. And by the fourth, I won't have, um, my bank statements and all of that stuff in, probably, um, probably by the fourth, but not on the fourth. So, um, I just don't know. Cause I will need, um, I will need some downtime to do a lot of budgeting and, and stuff like that. So I want to reschedule that meeting. And also, uh, we, we already discussed this, but we were going to discuss the, the budget. But other than that, that's it for me.
So are you all okay with moving it to January the eleventh, the second Monday? The, my, I don't have a concern for January's council meeting, but if we do the comp planning meetings on Monday, that's going to limit our flexibility for rescheduling. So as much as I'd like to keep it on a Monday, it may not fit our schedule.
They said Tuesdays, too.
Yeah, Tuesdays.
Tuesdays, Wednesday.
Tuesdays, Wednesdays. So, so that's one thing I want to look at, too, when we're looking at the comp planning.
Okay.
Um, I don't have any huge, huge updates. Um, parking lot and, uh, septic survey will be next month. Uh, banners are up. We will put up, I'm going to try to get, we've got some Christmas lights. I'm going to try to put those up on the poles that have the banners. Maybe someday I'll do the outlets.
You find some lights?
Yes, Deana was able to, yes.
I did Saturday morning, I stopped at Home Depot. I got nine, but I, there's, the, the three corners out Tarrentine and Main, I didn't buy for those. I thought they were, had the banners, but they didn't.
That's, that's fine. We can, we can go get the other three if we need to. I just want to get it up and make sure that, that they're working. The, the Team Hunger people tried it, but because it was in the daylight, it wouldn't come on because of the sensor in there. So they didn't think it was working, so they didn't do any of them. So I'm assuming that once it gets dark and I plug it in, it's going to work, but, but.
You need to move the trash, the trees that we cut out to make room for those banners. Take them out of Joe's right yard.
Are they still in?
Yeah, we don't pick them up.
No, we just moved to the side of the road. I thought it was Harper's, or Harper's Valley. Harper Valley is going to be there. Harper Valley PDA is going to be there.
I didn't think about that. I didn't think about that. Okay, yeah, we'll, uh, I need to go over there and get that.
We, we cut a bunch of them off the trees to put those banners up.
Well, good, because you, when I came Saturday, I really couldn't hardly count none. I couldn't find them.
Mm-hmm, because they're the damn trees.
There were four on Main and five on Tarrentine, but the, but the trees are hiding them.
Mm-hmm. The other piece of news that I have for you guys is I have found a grant program through USDA that will repair single-family residential properties that are, that are home, home, homeowner occupied. And it's a, if you're over, if you're over sixty-two, it's a grant. If you're under sixty-two, it's a one percent loan for home repairs, typically about up to twenty thousand dollars. They'll repair roofs, they'll repaint, they'll weatherize, they'll improve the windows. So all these dilapidated properties around town.
But a lot of them are.
If it's owner occupied.
Owner occupied.
If it's owner occupied, but that's going to take care of some of the.
Those two on the end?
Yes. So, so what I want to do.
If they, if they agree to do the grant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So what I want to do is in, in the town staff will, Shepherd, she heard the process and reach out to the homeowner, assist with filling out the forms and just walk them through the process.
What's the, what's the gotcha in it? Is there a match?
Well, the only gotcha is, um.
You're just paying money back.
That's, that's really about the only, only gotchas. It has to be owner occupied.
If it's a grant, so it's not, there's no payback.
Sixty-two and up is a grant. Sixty-two and under is a one percent loan. And I, I need to talk with them because I'd like the town to take a more proactive approach, um, in case it doesn't work. I was thinking that we could possibly do some match, but this doesn't require any match. I mean, if you're eligible, they'll come in and do the repairs.
Thanks.
So.
Wouldn't code enforcement be involved first to try and.
No, 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 because, no, because this is, well, I mean, yes, they could, and, and that'll be, that'll be the stick. You know, the carrot is, hey, we have this program. All you got to do is apply for it. We'll help you with it. The stick is, here's the deficiencies that you got to correct. And so we're going to be working out that program and hopefully we'll start it in.
Shoot, I wonder if I can get it.
Twenty twenty-one.
So what about any rental properties, nothing?
Got to be owner occupied.
I need to apply.
Yeah, we got to. Damn, dump you with it.
I know. Really needs to be painted.
Yeah, I mean, you could. This, I mean, this, this is a program that's available to everybody. And, and, and she just told me that they got some, some money recently, so they're looking for.
Oh, so they're ready to spend?
Yeah, they're ready to spend.
Perfect.
Yeah, and it takes about three months to do, three months to do the program.
It's awesome.
She just had to spend ten grand on her roof. Yeah. Merry Christmas.
Yes.
Did you ask a question about Patsy?
No, have y'all, Ms. Patsy that lives next to Haynes Trail in Tarrentine, have y'all heard anything about her?
The, the little, no.
The lady that, the little lady that lives right next to Kathleen?
I remember Kathleen Runcs called one day whenever we had that tree down in the county. Um, she, the little lady, actually wouldn't let people come down there until the fire department went down and removed the tree.
So that's been recently, then?
That's been, that's been the last six months.
Six months, yeah.
Why, y'all haven't said it all?
I haven't seen her.
Cause I haven't seen her.
I was ready for it. No, I've seen Kathleen, but not the, not Patsy next door, on the corner.
I haven't.
She, that's an owner occupied place. It'd be nice for her to have the access to the cash to fix that place.
Yep.
Yes, and we have several on the end of Tarrentine as well.
Yeah, that's going to be our next, those are going to be the ones that I really want to, Patty, Ms. Pat, uh, Ms. Beck and Patty Lumbekel will be the one that we go to first.
You got that one, you got that one for next to the Richards, too, on Main. That woman from Colorado that came back.
Regina, Regina, yes, Regina, that's a good one. Owner, owner occupied.
And, uh, and Polly also. So you got a lot of targets. And that would be a, that'd be a pretty money to be ready for them.
Boy, what's the name of the grant?
The USDA Section 504 Housing Repair Loan Grant Program. Section, section 504.
Gosh, I need to have a mop. I'm sixty-eight, I can get one.
And those are my, those are my updates. Um, Deana, is there anything else that, that I need to mention? Anything else we've had going on?
I don't think so. I just need your signatures before you leave. Um, and I guess we just need to adjourn and that's it.
Okay, all right. If there's no other business before council, I'll ask for an adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Elizabeth first, Tom second. All in favor? Go forth and prosper.